Followed by our invocation, Mickey Katanjian is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask that you please stand.
Hello, my name is Simojit and the following is a sick prayer which has tones of sacrifice from our foremothers and our forefathers in which we seek courage and blessing from. (speaking in Armenian) 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 We, the sick people of Fresno, ask for you to give courage and resilience to our city's council members. May they always make the right decisions. They have a great power and with that comes great responsibility. (speaking in Armenian) 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 Thank you.
And now retired firefighter Mickey Katanjian is going to lead us in the flag salute. Thank you. We now move to approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do you have any changes to today's agenda?
Just a few. Let's see. The minutes, when we get to the minutes, the minutes for the 8th of June is going to be continued to June 22nd, but the other two will be approved. And also on item 1B is in boy. It's subject to the mayor's approval, veto approval, so it'll require five votes.
Mayor, are there any changes from city council members?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. And a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, item carries unanimously. Move now to ceremonial presentations. Many of you are here for that. And something that makes us all very proud, and Mayor Lee Brand and also city council member Gary Brettafield are presenting Anaya Vinayde for winning the Scripps National Spelling Bee. Microphone's up here.
Good to see you, Brianna. I have the privilege today to introduce the 2016 Scripps National -- oh, I'm sorry, I'm one year off. 2017 Scripps --
(inaudible)
We'll get to that. National Spelling Bee Champion, Ananya Vinay. And Councilman Brettafield will be here today, but I talked to her outside. She is a remarkable young woman and you guys must be very, very proud. I asked her, "How much time do you spend to prepare?" And she told me, "How many hours?"
Three or four every day.
And she has to memorize a lot of these words. And in addition to spending a lot of time on spelling, she does a lot of good things in the community. She's a volunteer for the food bank and many of the things. She's a sixth grader at Fugman Elementary in Councilman Brettafield's district. And I also want to acknowledge the Fresno Bee because it was expensive to send her back to be successful in being the national champion. And that includes also the Fresno County Office of Education, Chevron, Educational Employees Credit Union, River Park, Fresno State, just to name a few. This was truly a community effort and we're very proud of the city of Fresno. And I'll let Councilman Brettafield speak first and then I'll let you speak.
Not a whole lot to add. We're so proud of you and the city of Fresno. It is quite an accomplishment, national spelling champion. So, on behalf of myself, council, of course Mayor Brand, congratulations. Job well done.
Thank you so much to Fresno for all your support and prayers and I'm really grateful for all the work that went into letting me -- and I'm really grateful for all the work that went into letting me get this far and I hope I made Fresno proud.
Certainly have. This is outstanding ovation, huh? Thank you.
Absolutely. Please, just feel free to speak up.
City Clerk, can't get out that easy. You're gonna read the proclamation.
Oh yes, absolutely. I want to hear the proclamation.
Whereas Anaya Vinay, a sixth grader from James Fugman Elementary School, won the Scripps National Bee Spelling Championship on Thursday, June 1st in Washington DC. And whereas, Ananya also won the Fresno County Spell Off for the third year in a row and the California State Elementary Spelling Bee for the second year in a row. And whereas, her 172nd place finish at the 2016 Scripps National Spelling Bee Championship motivated her to study harder, thus set an example for others to never give up and to work hard to achieve your goals. And whereas, 291 contestants qualified for the National Spelling Bee and only 40 made it to the finals. Ananya maintained her calm during a nerve-wracking final and spelled the word "marawking", which is a dress fabric made from silk or rayon during the 36th round of the annual competition to become the first outright Scripps National Spelling Bee Championship since 2013. And whereas, Ananya has appeared on high-profile national programs such as Jimmy Kimmel Live, Good Morning America, Live with Kelly and Ryan, and rang the opening bell of the New York Stock Exchange, thereby becoming a great ambassador for our fine city. And whereas, Ananya has also shown an interest in helping others by volunteering to feed the hungry and aspirations to be a doctor, scientist, or writer after graduation. And whereas, Ananya has greatly expressed and inspired those far beyond her years with her unflappable demeanor, her commitment to excellence, and her personal investment in both her talent and her character. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2017 to be Ananya Vinayde in the city of Fresno.
Counsel?
All right. I'll let my colleagues down there shake hands.
Yeah, I think that counsel right now is having kind of a fanboy moment and so can we, can we come down and take our picture with you too?
We're all starstruck.
We're very starstruck, so here we come.
Testing one, two.
Well, we're gonna, while we're waiting for Clint, while we're waiting for Clint to get down here, I just wanted to say a few things. I want everybody to know that I also participated in a spelling bee. I came in third place, there were seven of us. I made it through cat and dog. I survived goat, I got stuck on horse, I spelled horse with two S's. But I'll tell you what, Anaya, we're so proud of you and your commitment to excellence really is an inspiration, not just to us, but for other kids your age that get a chance to see somebody that's making a strong commitment and then it payoffs with dividends. So, we're very pleased and proud to present this day to you and so very, very happy and then we want to take a picture with you.
Well, I think my colleague said it best. We're all, we all wanted to come down and take a picture with you. We're all kind of a little starstruck. I've never met, I've never met a National Spelling Bee Champion, so I've never met a national champion of anything of any sort. You're right, thank you Cap. This is my first time, so we're all very proud of you in the city and we thank you for coming down today and spending a little time with us. Councilmember Capriolio wanted to challenge you to a spell-off, but we stopped him, we stopped him right before he did that, so we're all very proud of you.
Of course, it would be in Italian, so I don't know. Congratulations, I join in these comments to you and we're so proud of you. And the good news is, you're a two-time winner. The bad news is, you've termed out. You can't go back again, right? We talked about that. That's, well, that's okay, but you have an experience that will be with you for your entire life, your family's life, your children's life, your children's children's life, because you are a champion. We're so proud of you.
I just did want to answer to the comment that you made about making Fresno proud. I think you've made the entire Central Valley proud, but here in the city of Fresno, we are so proud of you. And I think as a young woman, I am proud of you because you're going to be a role model to other young women in our community that what you put your heart, soul, and your mind to, you can accomplish. So, thank you so much, Anaya, for being a great example and a role model for all the young women out there, especially here in the valley and then the city of Fresno.
Photobombers, get out! Get out!
Congratulations again. Well, we have this opportunity this afternoon for me to make a presentation, so Professor, try not to get this too bad. Agababian, is that correct? Agababian? And Barushin, would you guys come up? And Lucine, would you come up, please? You know, usually when we're standing in front of you, and Mayor, please come up. Yes. Come on up here, would you join us? That's a tough act to follow, I know, but we're gonna do it. And Mayor Brand is gonna participate with us. So, on most occasions, we're here to give out recognition to various people and organizations in the city of Fresno. Today, this is unusual because we're here to receive a great gift representing the Armenian community. And so next to me is, I hope I did this right, Nicole Agababian. And thank you, sir, for being here. And Lucine, they're from Armenia to City Hall and they want to present a painting to the city of Fresno this morning or afternoon. Nicole painted numerous oil canvases from scenes at Yosemite, Kings Canyon National Park, Valley Armenian Churches, San Francisco, as well as the Discovery Center in my district, D4, where we were talking about this, as well as other landmarks in the city of Fresno. So he expressed a desire to donate his painting to the city of Fresno. And this occasion, it was 145 years ago that the first Armenians came into the valley and to Fresno. So we want to validate and appreciate and show some glorification of that episode because this community has so many Armenian citizens, thousands are here in Fresno. We're very proud that they are here and that you are here. And this is an interesting quote from the professor. He's visited many parts of the United States, from east coast to west coast, northern California and southern California, and the quote is this. "They found humanity in Fresno, where people are connected to their families, their homes, and farmland, where people are real, humble, and good-natured." So thank you, sir, for being here, we really appreciate it. And Mayor, would you like to say something?
You've said it all, Paul.
With that, we'll accept that presentation. Harus, you want to help us out? Let's show the council, they're all curious. I can see them leaning forward to their chairs for a change. Isn't that gorgeous? And, thank you.
It's titled Blossoming Africa Tree. Well, I think you said it exactly what Professor Agababian was saying. Thank you so much. Actually, they've been here since May 20th. They did travel all those places and just they returned a few days ago from Carmel when we contacted you, asking that I'd like to make a donation, you said. And that actually came from his wife to him. Of course, he has to agree with that. Yeah, we can see that. And this is a great pleasure that right now, all his paintings are at the UC Center, University of California, where the Armenian exhibition halls are. And later this afternoon, if you have time between 6:00 and 9:00 o'clock, just please come and enjoy it. They're all hanging there right now. At the UC Center, at the University of California Center on 550 East Shaw, across from Fashion Fair.
District 4.
District 4, yes. It's where the Armenian Museum right now is housed. So you guys can come in there, it's open to the public and please come and enjoy it. You'll see Yosemite, you'll see some of the great, great paintings he did, sequoia trees, and also few scenery from Carmel that he just brought with him. I was surprised to see that too. He has the canvases in his car, so when he's driving around, he says, "Oops, stop right here," and he paints it. It's about 22 paintings all from the valley. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. We do appreciate it.
This will be displayed prominently in this building and we can't thank you enough and for what you represent from the Armenian community as well. So thank you so much for being here and this presentation. We can't thank you enough.
You're the one that taught me that. All right, thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. And thank you, Professor Agababian. Very nice. All right. We can move now to minutes. Now, I remember, Madam Clerk, you saying something about the budget hearing minutes. We're only approving, what, the 6th and the 7th? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, Counsel, does anyone have any changes to the minutes from the budget hearings of June 6th and 7th? Okay, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion by Member Brandow and a second by Councilmember Capriolio. You're punched up, is that for reports? Okay. I'm gonna clear that out. Okay, so the screen is clear right now, is there any opposition? Okay, item carries unanimously. We move now to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Member Capriolio and then Member Soria.
Thank you. We recently had a meeting with Fresno State in intensifying and fortifying, if you will, the relationship between District 4, city of Fresno, and Fresno State. From this latest collaboration, we're able to light up areas around the campus so the students and the residents feel safer. So I wanted to thank Scott Mosier, the mayor, of course, the administration for making this possible. So we're gonna have lights, LED lights, all the way down Campus Drive, all the way over to Millbrook, behind the stadium. So we're working diligently together and this team that we've talked about and just formed, and the chief as well, we are going to light up Fresno State more and more, make it safer and safer for students and the residents around the university. Also, I wanted to, you know, in light of these recent tragic events and the San Francisco UPS shootings, as well as the Republican lawmakers, maybe we should have, just for a second, folks, a moment of silence for those that have lost their lives in the last few days. So, in light of that, I want to remind all the city employees that the Fresno Police Department and Chief Dyer, who's here in the front row, they're providing a training session on the topic of active shooter slash terrorism awareness. And you may or may not recall, I started this last year when I was council president. And I think we should all take advantage of it because this is a tragedy that seems to happen all too often across our country. I'd like to also try to continue that training with businesses, chief, in our community, as well as schools and residents, so they can be prepared for the awful ugly situation that might have happened. So, thank you, Chief Dyer, for providing that continuing support. And the sessions will be on June 23rd at 10:00 to 2:00, and then from 2:00 to 4:00 PM in the afternoon of June 23rd. So, I encourage everyone to be here for that and thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Member Soria.
Just wanted to say, in anticipation of Father's Day, Father's Day weekend is coming up, I want to wish all my council colleagues up here who are fathers a happy early Father's Day and to all the staff in the city of Fresno as well as our dads, happy Father's Day.
Thank you. The screen is clear, no one else has any more comments. I'll go ahead and make a comment. Counsel and administration, the Youth Commission is having a conference and are in need of some help to, for their venue. And so for a cost of $145 per council district, you can sponsor your Youth Commission appointee and they're having a very special conference at Fresno State in the Seminole Student Union. And this $145 would cover the room rental fee. So is everyone kind of nodding consent? Okay, we have a consensus. So what I will do is, it's, I think everybody is absolutely in support of Youth Commission. Have a budget, yeah. All right, so it's about to go up to $157 per council member.
No, I mean, they have a budget, right?
Yeah.
And do you know how much is in their budget?
Yeah, we can, I can, I'm happy to, I'm happy to help you.
So this is like raising taxes on you?
On you.
You're suggesting.
On you.
Well, I don't like taxes raised on me, okay.
All right. Thank you.
We'll talk more about it.
Thank you all, and then I'll have my staff get in touch with your staff to go ahead and cover that.
I think what Councilmember Brandow is suggesting is that we should probably talk about this, or instead of having the stunned look on our faces with your comments, that we could talk about it and, of course, agree to it. And I'm happy to sponsor that in District 4.
Thank you. I didn't, no offense to you was intended.
Oh, it's not me, Steve had the look of, you're in the headlights.
If you wish to help them, then you can help them, and if you don't, then you don't. But the organizer, Yamalat Rodriguez, asked me if I would be willing to help and I said yeah, and so I'm soliciting my council colleagues if they would be willing to help as well. So if you want to pitch in, you can, and if you don't, then you absolutely don't. So thank you, Counsel. Move now to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any item that they wish to remove from the consent calendar? Member Brandow.
I'd like to pull items 1B about the San Joaquin River, 1F, because I know there's some folks that would like to discuss that, 1F about the Five Bars Agreement that we initiated a couple of weeks ago, and then 1G as well for a comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who are here who wish to address the council on any item contained in our consent calendar? Please come forward. Oh no, it's all. It's all. So even if somebody wants to speak on 1G and it's been pulled, they still speak now? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and return to the city. Okay, yes.
My name is Radley Reeve. You're not going to vote on the other consent items and have a separate vote for 1B? You're not going to do that today?
Yes. When the council, when a council member removes an item, it takes it out of the consent calendar. The members of the public are invited to address the council on any item, whether it's been removed or not.
We're gonna get your chance, Radley.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll be in a few minutes.
No, this is, this is it. This is it. Yeah, people.
You vote on the remainder and then we go tackle these individuals.
City Attorney, am I just, have I been doing this wrong for six months? I thought that public came and addressed the consent calendar. We didn't have different public comments for the different removed items. Am I wrong or right?
That's correct. Each council president may handle this a little bit differently, but the practice has been for the last six months is that we take public comment once for all of the items.
Okay. So that's how I'd like to proceed. So if anyone wishes to address any item on the consent calendar, now would be the time to speak. So if you could, there's a way we can move the podium up for you too, so you'll be more comfortable, you're taller.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Give us your name and address for the record and then you'll have three minutes today.
Great. My name is Radley Reeve and I reside at 557 West Escalon in Clovis and I am addressing item 1B. I've taken a look at the scope of work that's to be done under the agreement with AECOM for the River West Trail Project. And what I found were numerous errors, significant. And when I say numerous, I mean dozens of errors in it. I think you may already know about that. As a result, it's going to need to be revised somehow, and so I'm wondering how that is going to take place. Let me give you an idea of the type of problems that there are, I'll name three of them. The contract says that the city is going to conduct what's called an NOP, or a Notice of Preparation. of Preparation, for the work they're going to do on the EIR, but that is not done at this stage. That's only done when you initiate an EIR, not when you're in the middle of it. So all the language will need to be stricken on that. The second thing is that it also says that the City of Fresno is going to be the lead agency to make all the findings a fact, and of course, that is absolutely incorrect. We know that the Conservancy will do that, so that'll also have to be changed. And lastly, there are numerous comments in there that the City of Fresno, through this process, is going to be able to either redesign, reconfigure, or revise the project description for the Conservancy's EIR, and that legally just can't be done. So there are lots and lots of changes to be made. The question is how to make them. And so I want to let you know that I received a revised version. I don't know that you have seen it, but I got it from Mr. Benelli. And in the document I gave you, I compared the current scope of work with the revised scope of work, and neither one is satisfactory at all. So I would appreciate it if you would not today approve anything exactly. You can't do that. It's neither a document that works. But maybe you can find a way to ask your staff and the Conservancy staff and AECOM to get together very quickly and find something that you can approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll also have three minutes.
Sharon Weaver with the San Joaquin River Parkway and Conservation Trust, and our office is located at 11605 Old Friant Road. And I echo the concerns that Mr. Reap mentioned, but I also just wanted to mention to you, I'm concerned that an item like this was just placed on consent because I think it is a rather complex item. It involves the use of Measure C funds for a study on a document for which you have already funded a study. This is creating a road, or studying the creation of a road that goes into the river bottom, and it's a road that goes through a landfill area. It begins and ends on a landfill, and so what you're talking about doing is spending $97,000 on a piece of property that you don't own and that I've heard from some of you that you don't want to own. So I'm just curious about the fact that the City of Fresno, who doesn't have the money to maintain your own parks and states that you can't spend money to even replace signs, which you are obligated, under grant contracts, to replace, wants to spend money to study a road that I don't think you have any intention to build. So that's my concern for this, about this item, and I'm just concerned that it was put in under consent, and I don't think there's very much transparency or public information about this item. I've created copies of the study, just in case any of you have not seen the study that you funded, from Blair Church &amp; Flynn, and I'd be happy to get those to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address any item contained on our consent calendar? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and return the discussion to the City Council. City Attorney?
Yes, I was just going to provide counsel with the information that Taliya is working on this, and the documents before counsel are correct and legally defensible.
Thank you, City Attorney. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Okay, we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. We move now to our first item that's been removed by City Council. This is item 1B, removed by Councilmember Brandow.
And I think Scott's going to do a quick overhaul or presentation.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmember Scott Mosier, Public Works Department. The item before you concerns a project, proposed project, to extend the Eaton Trail. It's called the River West Eaton Trail Extension, roughly from the Woodward Park area where Eaton Trail ends today, going west to Spano Park and the Palm and Knees area. What we have before you is a proposal to approve a contract with AECOM in substantially the form attached. Due to a very short timeframe, we needed to give the Council essential points of that contract. In regards to the comments made, I want to assure the Council that our staff's been working very closely with Melinda Marks, Executive Director of the San Joaquin River Conservancy, and we're confident, working together, we can address those items and the scope. This project has a very short timeframe in order for the Conservancy to meet its EIR deadlines, timeframe as far as their contract with the consultant timing out on the environmental document. In regards to the Measure C trail funding, I want to again assure the Council, I've spoken personally with, many of you know, Mark Kepler, leader in the community, who was very involved in the Measure C Steering Committee for those trail funds. He understands the project, he understands what we're doing with the dollars, and he expressed no concerns to me about that usage. It's a great project. We look forward to it going forward. One of our main purposes with this consultant agreement with AECOM work is to provide the additional environmental documentation, the feasibility studies for what's called Alternative 5B, an access from Palm and Knees to connect to that trail and to parking facilities for the project. It's necessary to do that in order to align this project with our 2035 general plan that the Council's adopted, and we want to ensure that's the case. So with that, I know there's material in the staff report. It's a fairly complex item, and staff's available with any questions. Thank you.
Right. Can I make comments now, or? You've already gone out to the public? Yes. All right. So for my colleagues, I'd just like to explain, and many of you, I've given a little tour of this part of the river. So let's begin, and I'm going to try to be very simple. There's a fantastic project that's going to happen out on the San Joaquin River. It's the extension of the Eaton Trail, many extra miles of trail for bikes, eventually horses, pedestrians, people that want to enjoy the river with some amenities to make that possible. That's all coming through the Conservancy that I've been serving on for the four and a half years that I've been a council member. So it's coming up to probably the greatest project that we've ever seen during my time on the Conservancy, and it's going to get done, and many people are committed to it. However, in the last couple of months, there's been a couple of challenges that have arisen. One of them is that over a year ago, we voted from council to spend money to prove access points to the river, specifically looking at the Palm and Knees area. And we're under a heavy burden of the City of Fresno to provide access points to the river, and it's a burden that we've taken up quite aggressively. As a matter of fact, in my four and a half years, I've never seen the Mayor of the City of Fresno come to a Conservancy meeting until last month, when Mayor Brand attended personally. Bruce Rudd has been to the last two meetings personally, and as well as Scott and Andrew and some of our other staff members. And what we've, as a City of Fresno, we've endeavored to look at Palm and Knees because we believe it's a best fit with our general plan, and it's also a better, superior plan than other access points at this time. That's not denying other access points, but we want to definitely see Palm and Knees included as an opportunity for an access point. So the Conservancy, I don't want to lose anybody, but the Conservancy has a consultant that designed their EIR. We don't believe that their consultant looked closely enough at Palm and Knees access. So what today we're voting on is a little more additional money to allow our consultant, a different consultant, to go down and prove to us and to others if or if not Palm and Knees is a viable access point. We believe it is, but we'll find out in this study. That has challenged some, thinking that we're trying to throw off the trail itself, and the City of Fresno has been maligned by articles in the Fresno Bee, by letters to the editor in the Fresno Bee, and many of them are emanating from the River Parkway Trust, which is a group that has, you know, some very thoughtful ideas on this trail. But I think we've been maligned, and today I wanted to express that to you. We are aggressively going after river access points. We just happen to disagree on a few technicalities, and we believe the best spot's Palm and Knees. So we're going to spend a little money to prove that Palm and Knees is a fantastic access point to not only the 515,000 people in the City of Fresno, but the region as a whole. And there's a lot of reasons that make it the best point in our minds, and this is not just my mind, by the way. This is the Administration and our general plan. But I'm not going to go into all that detail today. That would take an hour. But what we're asking for today is to budget some money to prove that case. Then I would also, and Radley, I appreciate your comments, we, I called up both consultants at the last Conservancy meeting, and they were standing next to each other, and I asked them if we could integrate the two studies together. If it is proven that Palm and Knees is viable, could we integrate the two studies? And both consultants said that we could. Now, Mr. Reap and some others think that we, maybe we can't, but both consultants say that we can, and our attorney has reviewed that, and we believe that we can. And so I am going to make the motion to follow staff recommendation today and to allow us the opportunity to show that Palm and Knees is a great spot to access the San Joaquin River and this eventual trail. So that is my motion today.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. We have Member Baines punched up. You're up.
Yeah, thanks, Council President. And just a couple of clarifying questions from my mind. If I'm understanding correctly, and I know you did a really good job of simplifying it, but I may ask you to simplify it even one more level. So the Conservancy has, and frankly, I don't follow this issue as closely as you do, but I want to see if I can understand. The Conservancy has their own consultant that did an analysis
Yes.
over the access points. We disagree with that analysis. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Why?
Well, because we felt like they did not look closely enough at the Palm and Knees, specifically one of, so in Palm and Knees, Oliver, we found that there were five potential access points essentially off of Palm and Knees. There's one of them that we feel is almost a slam dunk, but to be honest with you, Sharon brings up some valid, some valid points, okay, on the final result, but the role of the City of Fresno is to provide the access. Now, what happens beyond there becomes a little bit of a question mark, and I think there's some concerns there. But Oliver, what we did, you and I, and our colleagues, committed money to show that Palm and Knees was viable, but their consultant didn't see it that way.
So the money that we?
Can I, can I add some clarity to that? What the study, the draft EIR indicated that it was feasible because of environmental concerns, but the study never actually did any tests to determine whether or not there was an environmental, that's based on some, you know, speculation, and as pointed out there, at one time was a landfill there. I also will remind you, we have a park sitting right on the edge of that bluff, and so this additional work will be used to go in and actually take soil samples. We have a release from the property owner, Mr. Spano, that allow us to do that. So what we are actually doing is going in and doing the assessment of the site to determine whether or not it is or isn't feasible. From a technical standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, it is very much feasible.
And so the initial study does not go in and do that level of analysis, the soil samples and what have you? They do do the engineering analysis, I'm assuming. I mean, that seems like?
We provide the engineering analysis, and it's not an issue of whether or not, from an engineering standpoint, 5B is feasible. The question is, from an environmental standpoint, can it be constructed on what may or may not be inert or a, for lack of a better term, a wet landfill? So what we're going to do with this is go in and actually do the soil sampling to determine whether or not it can be built, and if so, are there any, is there any mitigations in the event that we do find? As I shared with the board, there are ways to mitigate the impacts of a landfill, and I actually pointed to the fact that we quote-unquote have a park in West Fresno. It's built on a landfill, and we somehow were able to figure that one out. But the first step is to find out whether or not, from an environmental standpoint, whether or not 5B is feasible. If we come back and it finds out that it is not feasible because of contamination at the site, then the discussion's over with. But if we can come back with an analysis to determine that it is feasible, then it's, then the next process is to recirculate this, which is the second part of the project with AECOM, is to recirculate the findings, and that's what is before you today, is the cost of that recirculation in the event that other studies show that it is environmentally an option.
And so the initial study is saying that it's, the Palm and Knees access point is not feasible?
It's saying that they, it was, they believe it's environmentally unfeasible.
But they don't have anything to support that, is what you're saying?
No.
Okay, that's what I was trying to, thank you both of you for that clarification. That gives me a little bit more comfort, because I was trying to, listen, my concern was that I don't want to just discard a report because we don't agree with it unless we have some meritorious reasons for disagreement, right? If, I know, and I've been a part of this discussion, Steve, and thanks for reminding me, I remember when we had the first discussion on access, and I am supportive of, you know, ultimately, hopefully, finding an access point on Palm and Knees, as you know, as I've told you. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're doing it the right way, so, okay. Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. I know that there are, maybe, Ms. Weaver, can you maybe answer a couple of questions? I know that there's multi-jurisdictions here at work. The city has part of that. I believe it's a state board, with various different board members that are appointed. Then your organization, obviously, you know, works and is entrusted with that. What are the plans from your organization's point of view that you'd like to incorporate this? Because I, I'm starting to sense that maybe we're not on the same page on certain things. Maybe, could you clarify that?
So the, the study that is a part of your agenda, item 1B today, it is to take a route that was evaluated as part of the Conservancy's Environmental Impact Report, their draft Environmental Impact Report on the Fresno River West project. And when they looked at it, and I just want to point out, I feel like there's been some misinformation already put out here today. I just handed everybody a copy of your own study, and that's, I'm sorry, I didn't, it's, they're down here, but that study, which was done by Blair Church &amp; Flynn in 2015, it points out the areas that are landfill areas. There is no question about whether or not this route is on a landfill. It is absolutely, it begins on a landfill and it ends on an inert landfill. So that is really not a fact which is in question. The only question is whether or not it makes sense to do additional environmental review on this route, even though it's on a landfill. And you can certainly say, we want to build it on a landfill. Anybody can build anything on a landfill. It's feasible. We build, we build roads across lakes. I drove across Lake Ponchatrain a few weeks ago. Of course, it's technically doable, but the issue is whether it makes sense for the City of Fresno to spend money on a $2.5 million road, potentially, it could be more than that, but that's the engineer's estimate in the report that I just gave to you, when you actually have two other roads that go to the same place within about 300 yards of each other. So that's the question, and that's the reason that the Environmental Impact Report did not choose to look at this as an alternative in the EIR. It is a route, and it was studied, but it wasn't an alternative that the Conservancy Board can vote on. Supervisor Andreas Borges and Councilmember Brandow would like this, and Mayor Brand would like this to be evaluated to the extent that it can be an alternative that the Conservancy Board votes on, and you guys are being asked to pay for that today. So that's what you're looking at.
I mean, are there, are there any, I had an opportunity to go and visit your organization a while back, and I remember we had a discussion about your overall plans for that area, and obviously, it's a beautiful site. I mean, we all want everybody in the city to be able to enjoy that. I personally go down there quite a bit and hike that area, but I'm trying to, trying to get a sense of what your plans are and how that fits with what we're trying to do. Do you believe there's, there's a gap between what your future plans are? And we talked a little bit about some funding that you had secured for the construction of some more improvements, but not the maintenance costs. That's something I know that you mentioned before. Where, where's your organization on that piece?
So operations and maintenance is not funded yet, and the River West Fresno Project, right now, it's in the planning stages. So there, the Conservancy, and I just want to point out, Melinda Marks from the San Joaquin River Conservancy, she is in the audience here today, and I'm sure would also be happy to speak on this item. So this is the Conservancy's draft Environmental Impact Report. We're a nonprofit that has worked to acquire land for the Parkway. We own and operate the Co-Callowell Center for River Studies on Old Friant Road, but I just want to be clear, we, we want to see River West take place, but right now, this is not our project. We're not, we're not managing this, this project. This is the Conservancy's project there, a state agency. This is the conservancy's project there, a state agency. So they have a draft EIR. The question is simply, do you, does it make sense for you, as the Fresno City Council, to spend money to create a new alternative for the conservancy's, the state agency's draft environmental impact report, when they have already created a draft environmental impact report that contains a number of other alternative access routes into the river bottom? There are three access routes into the river bottom that are considered as part of the EIR. One of them is at Palmonees, it just is not on this specific route. The route that was chosen as the alternative five in the EIR is the route that was suggested by your consultants, and that's why I mentioned that I wanted to provide that study to you. Your own consultant in 2015 recommended that route, and so that's what the conservancy chose, but there are some people that would like a different route to be considered, and that's what this is all about.
No, I, I understand that. I was here during the, that conversation, so, so I guess, just so I'm clear from your perspective, so if we go ahead and, and approve this, and the analysis comes back and says that, that for whatever reason, this is a viable option, does your organization not support that? Would they oppose that?
Our only concern with this is that whether or not, I mean, I don't think there's any question about whether or not it's a viable option. You can build this road. You can build it tomorrow if you want to spend the $2.5 million or $3 million that it will cost to construct it. That's not a question. The question is simply, is that going to be the route or the alternative that the conservancy board chooses to select as the preferred alternative when they approve the draft environmental impact document, or they certify the final environmental impact report?
Thank you for that. Councilmember Brandow, you know that area more, better than most of us here. I mean, is this, is this something that, that you've been working through and creating some options for, for, for us to consider, or what's the, what's the end goal? What would you like to see?
And I like your questions, Councilman Chavez, so, but realistically, most of your questions about what's going to happen in the final choice will still be left up to the conservancy, and the board members of the conservancy can pick and choose. That's their decision, they're the lead agency. The city of Fresno is a, is a partner with the conservancy, wants to insist that Palmonees should be studied further. And so our vote today is just to allow us that opportunity. The choices at the end of the day are going to move well beyond what we do at city council. It's going to be in the hands of the state agency, so.
Yeah, Member Caprioli, then Member Baines.
I'll defer to Member Baines, he's, looks anxious.
No, I want to ask a follow-up question, just for clarif, clarifications. So I, I think Ms. Weaver mentioned that there are five potential access points at Palmonees. Is that true?
There, there were five.
And are none of those, and none of those are options, or, or are we studying all of them right now, or just a particular one?
We're studying a particular one.
Okay, so-
And there's, there's really reasons for that particular one. It has fewer legal challenges and property rights challenges, and so its remaining challenge is really, can it be done? Could it be pulled off? And the study that we're about to initiate today, if this is passed by council, will prove once and for all whether it can be done. And if not, then we live with that information. But right now, we believe it's the best access point.
So what you're saying really is, you want to have all of the access points at Palmonees studied, essentially?
No, this is really doing a deep dive, Oliver. So this is doing a deep dive on the one particular alternative of those five that we believe would survive legal challenges, and this is more about engineering and environmental, can it be actually physically done, and can it be done without, without severe environmental-
So we're not studying, we're not even studying the other four?
No.
Okay.
So to follow up then, it sounds like you've already got this study in place. This was the viable route, route of choice, a route of choice, and now you're doing a confirmation move to support that, which would, in essence, be duplication at $170,000, $170,000 more or less.
Yeah, not, not exactly, Councilmember Caprioli. So this has been studied once by the city of Fresno, and then it was looked at inside of the conservancy's EIR, but neither one of those studies was an actual deep dive type of study. So when we use the word "study," lots of things get studied. They were, in these studies that were referenced, they were studied relatively superficially compared to what we want to do now. What we want to do now is do a comprehensive study that will prove it, rather than just look at it and write it off for some superficial reason. And city manager, if you wanted to add something to that, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to be clear, but I'm not sure if I am.
Again, the item before you today is to award a contract to, to AECOM, who is the lead agency for the conservancy on their environmental review. So if the study comes back and, and says from an environmental standpoint, the issues, there either are issues or aren't issues, but if there are issues that would preclude the project to go, the, the access to the river bottom to go forward. If, if it comes back and says, well, no, there is a way to make that go forward, then what AECOM and what you have before you today will be required to recirculate the draft EIR, or maybe required to recirculate the draft EIR. Given that, the conservancy asked the city of Fresno, asked the mayor, and asked the city of Fresno, would we be willing, since it was our study, and since the environmental aspect of the, this option was never, never fully vetted out, would we be willing to help augment the work that was done by conducting the environmental? And if so, would we also pick up the cost of recirculating the draft EIR, which is what you have before you now, which is the contract with AECOM?
I'm having trouble connecting those dots. I don't know if we should come back at a later time, but it sounds very much like duplication, replication, and it sounds, it sounds like the initial study should have covered this. And I don't know why it didn't, and if it didn't, it should apply to all five alternatives, or not just one. So, and quite frankly, McKinley Trail is my pet project, and $175,000 of Measure C money would go great a long way there. We're not replicating or duplicating or confirming something that's already been done.
Well, we're not duplicating something that was already done. We approached the, the initial scope from an engineering standpoint, because the first concern was whether or not, from just a pure engineering standpoint, was this option even viable? We conducted and commissioned a study, which came back and said, no, on the contrary, from an engineering standpoint, this access point is viable. We provide that information, for whatever the reason, and your question is, well, is on point. Why then, if from an engineering standpoint it was viable, why wasn't the additional work done to determine whether or not the environmental issues were, were a consideration? Unfortunately, for whatever reason, that work was not done. In order to move this and give the options that we believe that would allow the board to consider a multitude of options, we need to go through this in order to verify from an environmental standpoint whether or not we can move forward with this. If it doesn't prove to be viable from an environmental standpoint, then it's off the table, and this work won't have to go forward. But if it is determined to be viable, then they will have to recirculate, which is what you're looking at today.
Well, it sounds like it's viable. That's why we're discussing this, we've isolated on one. So if it's viable, pull the trigger, let's move on and, and save some Measure C trail money and other monies. I don't, I don't quite, I'm not connecting those dots.
Because we have to go out, we actually have to go out, and I'll let Mr. Moser take a shot, just because, we need to hire a company, and it won't be AECOM, we're going to hire a firm who will actually go out onto private property. We have a release from this property owner now, that will allow us to go out and actually take samplings of the soil, bore into the ground, to make sure that what we're proposing from an environmental standpoint can be constructed or built.
Just what I've read and what I'm hearing are not necessarily in sync. That's the part that's puzzling to me, so I'll try to figure this out. Thank you.
Mr. Moser, go ahead. Okay, the screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote electronically on this one. Yes is to support the motion. No, of course, is to oppose the motion. No, mine didn't light up.
Mine didn't either. There we go.
Okay, there you go. Everyone vote. Okay, item carries, five, zero, and two. Thank you, staff. We move now to item 1F, approve the amended and restated wireless marketing agreement. I believe this one was also removed by Councilmember Brandow. City staff?
Brian Horn, CIO for the Information Services Department.
So the city manager's office has brought this back. I had a conversation with Bruce yesterday about this issue, and so what I'd like to do, Bruce, is chit-chat a little bit and, and clarify what we could be voting on today. Before I do my motion, I think that you and I reached an agreement where you had some concerns about if technology changes, can the city get out of the contract if necessary? My goal was to extend this contract in perpetuity, so that the city of Fresno could be grandfathered in, into a good contract for, for the future. And are we able to do that?
Well, when, when this was before you a couple of weeks ago, I thought there were some ways to get out of this contract in the future if the city chose to, chose to. And after further discussion and review of the actual contract language, it was a determination that the, the ability to terminate this agreement was going to be a, a challenge. There were a lot of stipulations that I wasn't comfortable with. So as a result of that, Mr. Horn reached out to Five Bars, and what you have before you now, I think, is a, is a compromise as to where you're wanting to get. It is a agreement that essentially is a 25-year agreement, so it's a five-year with four five-year extensions. At any time during that 25-year period, if the parties want to extend the agreement further, the parties can do so. But given the constant change in technology and how we've seen so many advancements in the last three to four years, entering into a contract related to technology, whether it's basically subletting out our light poles or other assets, to me, is, is, it's not something I'm comfortable with or would be willing to recommend. Therefore, the item before you today, again, is an initial five-year with four five-year extensions during, again, any which time that the council may extend the contract, but conversely, it gives us the ability just to simply terminate the contract for, for no other reason than this, it's a decision that we have made. We don't have to provide any cause, there's no six-month runout period, and more importantly, the decision to terminate is not going to be subject to a hearing officer or administrative hearing process. So that's what is before you today. I, I recognize that you'd like to go in perpetuity, but that's a long time, so my recommendation is 25 years.
But Bruce, so to, the in-perpetuity part, and I'm glad that we don't have to spell that today, but the, that part comes down to, at the end of these contracts, either party can raise the case that they don't want to continue any further for no reason, just say, we're done, and it would draw to a final conclusion. But without either party saying that we want to get out of the contract, it would continue in perpetuity with another five-year extension. That seems pretty reasonable.
Or what can happen is that, at the end of year 15, year 20, year 25, the parties can come back and say, listen, we'd like to do this again for another 25 years.
Well, at that point, the, the rules of the contract could be changed by the state of California, which is looking at this imminently, they're looking at it now. The state of California is stepping in and removing these type of options for, for city governments. And so before they do that, and they take control over these type of contracts, I would like to allow us at least the opportunity to extend this contract into the unending future. And the, and the, and, but I recognize what you're trying to accomplish, but Bruce, at the end of the day, at the end of those contracts, either party can say, we're done. And it's not, and it doesn't have to be litigated or anything, we can just say, we're out of that. But I would like to see us, if neither party objects, whether it's five years in the future, 10 years in the future, or 25 years in the future, I would like to see the city of Fresno receive the benefit of the best dollar return to the city of Fresno, rather than a partial dollar return to the city of Fresno and a partial dollar return to the state of California, which I think is what they're working on in Sacramento. So I would like, I would still like to include that part about, if neither party objects, it gets a five-year renewal that can be terminated at any time. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, well, again, I, I've shared with you what my recommendation is. I don't know how the state of California could intervene on a contract that, whether it's five years, 10 years, or 25 years. I think the option of extending the terms of this contract would, and I'll rely on the city attorney, would, would basically take precedent over anything that the state of California may do once you enter into that agreement.
There are some changes in state law, and what it could mean is that when a contract expires, rather than being automatically extended, if it's subject to the parties having to agree to extend it, then new state law could take over and say, from that point forward, new terms would have to be imposed. Whereas if it automatically extends unless one of the two parties terminates the contract, then it's less likely the state could intervene and cause different terms to be imposed.
That's what I'm afraid of, right? You just asked-
So, so you have my recommendation, this is a policy.
So my motion's going to be, and Doug, you might have to help me with the language of this, but my motion, motion is going to be to follow the parameters that the city manager has laid out today, with the exception that this contract never comes to a final conclusion unless one of the two parties taps out. At that point, it automatically dissolves, and we could renegotiate under different rules, but without that, it would continue extending by five-year contact, contracts for infinity.
In other words, retain the language that was in the prior version as far as the automatic extensions.
Only on that part.
Right.
Yeah, and everything else, I agree with the city manager on that contract. So that's my motion today.
Your motion is to approve it with that provision.
Yes.
I'll second. So we have a motion, a second, a couple of council members punched up. Start with Member Soria.
She's not on that.
Member Baines?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So if it's an automatic renewal, not subject to, so this would be an automatic renewal, not subject to negotiation, is what you want?
Well, it's like all of our contracts, at, really, it's five-year extensions, either party can terminate at any time, but without that termination happening, there's no end to the contract, and it could continue for 50 years, bringing better money to the city of Fresno, as opposed to splitting our money with the state of California.
Right, no, and I, I absolutely know the concern. I'm, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, does the way your motion reads, remove us to have the ability to negotiate better terms, should better terms arise at some point in the future?
No, because we would just tap out of the contract, or cease the contract and renegotiate, but we'd be under new parameters at that point, but we could renegotiate in the future. It doesn't preclude us from doing exactly what Bruce wants to do. We could, we could get out at the end of any contract, just like we do with other contracts.
Well, I'm not necessarily, well, I know what you're trying to do. You're trying to, and, and let me acknowledge what I, I know you're trying to do. You're trying to protect the state from coming in and sweeping up the cash that this contract generates, which I agree with.
Yes, thank you.
No, 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 I, I agree, I agree with that sentiment. I, I just want to be cautious, and maybe I'm not framing my question the right way. If it's an automatic renewal, does that remove us to have the ability to negotiate something better, a better contract potentially in the future?
No, counsel, if the, either party would have the right to terminate the contract when you're coming up on a five-year renewal period. If you have the right to terminate, you also have the inherent right to ask for renegotiation too, as an alternative to termination.
Now, city attorney, with, with that, so Councilmember Brandow's concern is the, the way that the city manager had worded it- manager had worded it, and what was, let me parse these words. What's the real difference between the way the city manager had it worded and the way Councilmember Brandow wanted it worded?
The Councilmember Brandow's version would automatically extend in perpetuity, whereas the manager's version at some point would have a hard termination.
So that's the only difference?
That's what we're talking about here.
And the city manager's recommendation is 25 years?
No, I think the way the language is written is that at any time during the 25 years, let's say year 24, if the city wants to extend and Five Bars agrees to it, we would just continue to extend the terms and conditions of the agreement. You could extend it for another 25 years.
So the only material difference is the 25-year hard date? Because what you're saying is state law could come in and basically make us, not allow us to extend beyond that time because we have a hard date?
Right, with the manager's version, it's more likely the state could say, no, that contract had a termination date. From that point forward, we're imposing new terms, as opposed to automatic extensions.
Okay.
Any contract can be renegotiated or extended. The question here is, when would the state have the ability to step in and say, you can no longer do that contract?
So even though there's an automatic renewal, for instance, if, I don't know, I'm just using really easy numbers, if they're paying us $100,000 a year, and we now know that the value really is $200,000 a year, we can come in and still renegotiate that at that point? That this doesn't in any way impede our ability to do any of those negotiations without the state coming in and?
Well, there's a chance that if we renegotiated, the state would consider that then a new contract.
That was my, that's the whole point of my question.
But that would be true with either version we're talking about.
Right, and that was a point in my whole question is that if the whole concern is we almost get locked into something where, so here's my concern, that was, you answered my question. If we actually can negotiate a better deal, but the state has imposed certain rules, but the fact that we want a new deal, we can't because we're afraid the state would come in and take over, we potentially could be locked into a bad contract forever.
That's true, but that's true with either way of doing this that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Member Capriolio?
This might be a bad day for me. The dots are not working. So why, or what's the basis for the state coming in in five, 10, 15? Why are we concerned about that at this moment?
Brian?
If ever. I don't have anything that says they're going to do anything.
It will. There is a current Assembly Bill, I mean, sorry, Senate Bill, which is 649, which is mandating how small cells are deployed in cities and how much you can charge and what you can put on the poles. So right now, where the city could probably get, let's say, $150 per month per pole, the state's saying you can only have $100 to $850 per year per pole. So it's quite a bit of a drop. And so what they're doing with this particular Senate Bill is they're making it a state concern, not a local concern. So having an agreement in place like this would grandfather you in, so going forward, when this bill is passed, and we are hearing that it's going to be passed, that it will protect you going forward. And that's kind of why this is important.
So the city manager's proposal would be wiped out under this legislation, proposed legislation? I don't know, I mean.
Counsel, in 25 years, it could be wiped out, as opposed to never being wiped out if we stayed with the automatic extensions.
And the state never adjusting their rules to take care of people, or cities like ours that are trying to make that long-term adjustment. So, city manager, I'm looking at you. Give me a dot, will you?
I am just concerned with this organization entering into any agreement for anything, especially when it comes to technology, that goes on in perpetuity. The market will change. We've seen it happen. This locks you into the terms and conditions based on what we know today, not what we know 20 years from now. And so there may be some rules that come in from the state of California, in which the marketplace changes, and as a result, we still look at, well, it'd still be better than what we have now. I just, again, I'm concerned with this organization just entering into something that is open-ended as forever. And forever is a long time. So again, if the council's not comfortable with 25 years and the ability to extend, and they just want to, based on what you know today, with state legislation as you know today, lock into something that is, goes on forever, although it can be terminated at any time, then that's, it's a policy call. I've just given you my recommendation, and you can do with it as you please.
This sounds like one of those long-term bond deals that we've been suffering from.
Even those long-term bond deals have a cutoff date.
And you're advocating the cutoff date?
So, from what I understand, I know that you said it's in perpetuity, but in reality, at least what I'm hearing, there is room for us to negotiate every five years or terminate. Is that correct? So it's, it is in perpetuity, but it's not, because we still have the opportunity as a council, if we believe we see technology changing, to come back and say, hey, we're going to either terminate the contract or go out and try to renegotiate. And that's the power that the next city attorney would have and could make that decision, obviously with the support of the council. So I don't think, I think we've just got to be clear and not make it seem like we wouldn't have the opportunity to, because we do. Is that correct, city attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, and I think the issue, because I've been kind of following with the League of Cities, it's an issue of local control, and so I think that it may be important for us to, you know, maybe take a stand and also encourage our local legislators as they're looking at this legislation, so that it doesn't impact. But maybe today, we do support Councilmember Brandow's motion, so that we don't get, we do have the opportunity to continue with our existing terms. At least it gives us a little bit more power, according to the city attorney, correct? In terms of the state not having the power to come in and changing our terms?
That's correct.
So that would be my suggestion. So I'll go ahead if, did you already get a second? Okay.
Okay, the screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Oh, did you, I'm not going to vote electronically, we'll just vote. Is there any opposition to the motion? All right, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Okay, and we move now to item one G, approve the appointment of Pao Yang and reappointment of Kathy Bray to the Planning Commission.
All right, Council President, I promise, this one's not, this is nothing much more than a comment. So I'm really glad to see that we're getting some fresh blood on the Planning Commission. And I think it's long overdue, and I appreciate Mayor Brand's reappointment of Kathy Bray, but also his appointment of Pao Yang, who's a real sharp individual that I've had a chance to get to know in the last couple of years. And so I think he'll be a great addition. I just wanted to recognize that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve these appointments.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and the screen is clear. Oh, wait, we have to go out to the, we already went out to the public. All right, the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion? Okay, carries unanimously. All right, now we can move to scheduled council hearings and matters. Actions per, this is item 17-796, actions pertaining to substantial amendment. Darm, hello.
Hello, good afternoon, counsel. Kelly Furtado, the Assistant Director in DARM. Today, I'm going to be presenting a quick summary on the substantial amendment item before you. As many of you already know, anytime a substantial amendment is made, we are required to go through a process, and we have done so, including a lot of outreach, a 30-day public comment period, publication in several different formats, both low, no cost, and some that are costly. We've been through the HCDC, the Housing and Community Development Commission. They've made a recommendation that I will summarize for you, and they held a public hearing last night. So I will spend some time reviewing the public comments at that meeting. Today, you'll also be holding a public hearing as you're considering this item. So the staff report has a lot of the detail regarding about $1 million that we have identified as savings, and some recommendations on where we would be recommending where those funds be used in the future related to this substantial amendment. It is important just to note that it's essential that these funds be focused on what I've called shovel-ready projects, things that are ready to be implemented, that have gone through some of the evaluation for eligibility, and can be swiftly implemented. So as many of you know, we have timeliness issues that we need to stay on top of when it comes to these federal funds. In the staff report, I had indicated that I'd be providing a verbal update on the HCDC, which held their meeting last night. So the commissioners recommended that the city council approve the item before you today, and there were no public comments involved in the 30-day public comment period, nor were there any outreach, was there any outreach to our point of contact during that process? However, last night, at the public hearing that the HCDC held, there were three speakers. I don't believe, when I last looked, those speakers were not in the audience, so I want to go ahead and recap their comments and explain to you a little bit of how the HCDC chair asked that we engage with those members. But it was Diane Smith with HEAT, it was Brunette Harris with HEAT, and it was George Hostetter that made comments last night. So I'm just going to briefly go over their comments, and then I will conclude my presentation. First was Ms. Smith, who indicated some confusion related to there being several amendments being publicized, and she was requesting clarification regarding substantial amendment 2017-02. She had commented on whether or not that is an ongoing amendment process or if it was separate. So we were able to clarify at the meeting that that was a separate and unique substantial amendment. It was not an ongoing process from a prior substantial amendment. And she had also asked if the staff could verify for her last night if the HEAT letter that they wrote, that she believes that they wrote for the First Amendment in 2016 was completed. That was a home substantial amendment. It was not related to CDBG. And while I was able to confirm that for her last night, I committed that I would get back to Ms. Smith and let her know the answer. I have since learned that we did not receive a letter for public comments. However, we did document public comments from three individuals at the hearing on that matter, and those did include comments from Diane Smith, Matthew Grundy, and Brunette Harris. Ms. Harris's comments were relating some confusion, and then she went on to instruct the HCDC to read the HUD federal guidelines, indicating that there was a requirement to have community meetings prior to even coming up with recommendations for an amendment. She reiterated that she would continue appearing and asking the HCDC to hold community meetings and also hold the city accountable. Ms. Harris went on to object to the substantial amendment, stating that they are out of order and that it does not make sense. And she closed by, again, objecting and asking the HCDC when they were going to begin going into the community and holding meetings. Staff last night was able to clarify for the record that the HUD regulations related to the reprogramming of these dollars was being followed, and as well, our citizen participation process was being followed. Mr. Hostetter was the last to comment last night, and he commented that he did not feel as if the substantial amendment process included sufficient context for members of the public to thoroughly understand it. And he went on to explain that he had some difficulty tracking down the community centers that were involved in the Highway City project. He detailed that he had finally contacted that agency and understood that due to some prevailing wage requirements, they were, that was why they declined the award. And he questioned why those issues were not identified prior to the award being made to the Highway City group. And he also stated his confusion related to the city's loan repayment and questioned why we did not know nine months prior that there would be a payment due in August. So in regards to Mr. Hostetter's comments, staff was able to clarify the Highway City project, that they went through the notice of funding availability, they went through the CDBG application process. All of those documents do explain in great detail the federal regulations that are required. However, it is a very complex and complicated process. So after doing their due diligence with the city, the agency, the community-based agency did decline the award. And to put it simply, they had a $329,000 award from CDBG, and it would have, the prevailing wage would have cost their total project much more than $329 had they accepted the funds. The last point that we were able to clarify from Mr. Hostetter was that certainly the staff was aware nine months ago that we would be having a repayment, and we simply adjusted that repayment. And instead of it being included in the upcoming annual action plan, we're doing it in this reprogramming because we can be much more timely. As you all know, there's a lot of uncertainty surrounding this year's federal funding process. So that concludes my comments on the verbal update from the HCDC meeting, and we are here to answer any questions. But just to clarify, staff is recommending approval of the substantial amendment 2017-02 in front of you today.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and return to council. Member Capriolio made a motion. Did I hear a second? Okay, Member Chavez?
Kelly, thank you for meeting with me, kind of giving me the overview on that. We briefly spoke about the lead abatement program, rehab, and then in that conversation, we spoke about the senior paint program that we have. So, I mean, this is great. We're going to have a lot of opportunities to make some investments in our community. And we spoke about, particularly with EOC, and I think we have a representative back here, they have a great program where they train young folks to be marketable out there in the workforce. I want to put on my colleague's radar, I'm working on an initiative to establish an apprenticeship program, workforce development initiative. And the reason for that is, we have, you know, just like this, we have quite a bit of number of investments going on in our community with high-speed rail, with school bonds, with BRT, with the water infrastructure plan, street repairs. And so I think, I think this will be a great opportunity to let some of our young folks gain some of that workforce experience and build the future, because ultimately, they'll be the ones, you know, having to live in that community. And so with that, could you just kind of give a quick overview on the lead abatement program and what we're trying to achieve in that, Kelly?
Certainly. Well, some of the funds included as proposed for the source, the use of these funds is for the administration, so that allows our team internally to continue running all of our rehab programs. And the lead paint abatement program will be modeled to be complementary to any programs offered by the county. I am not aware of whether or not they have been awarded, but I know they applied, and we supported their application to HUD for a much larger effort, and we have worked with the county in the past. And so we will continue to internally offer a complementary program that will go into typically homes prior to, built prior to 1978, and that have confirmed lead in them, and we will abate those properties.
Great. So at this time, Paul, can you just come up briefly and kind of give an overview of the program, Conservation Corps? So a little bit of self-disclosure, I was formerly a Conservation Corps member. Paul was my boss, and he did a great job there. Just a quick overview on some of the partnerships we had previously with the city, and whether you think there's opportunity for our folks there.
Sure. Thanks very much, Luis, and good to be in front of the council here. Many, many good friends over the years. Happy to represent the Conservation Corps. I haven't been there now for eight years, but I'm very familiar with what went on there for 17 years, beginning in 1993. And I still drive the streets of Fresno and see the homes, the streets that were repaired, median islands that were being taken care of. All that colored stamped concrete on the median islands throughout the city, we did that over a stretch of about three years. The median islands maintenance themselves, we did for about 12, 15 years of that time, really worked up capacity and ability, and, you know, to do that work, very intense kind of work. And as you well know, those are the kinds of things that constituents will call you about. So we're very, very proud, you know, that over the years, that went very well. I go past homes that I know we built, probably 200 homes over the course of time with youth build, and 1,500 homes that we weatherized during that time. And recycling, we offer free recycling services through the state of California in all public buildings, bars, and restaurants, and so forth. But I think what is impressive here is that of all the workforce development opportunities that I know of, the programs, the Conservation Corps probably leads. And I want to say that with one caveat, Mr. Baines, because you and I have been talking about the Mandela Center for some time, and that's a similar-type program because it's applied because it's applied work training. You know, students are not just sitting at a desk and taking down technical information, but they're actually doing things to learn, work by working, learn to work by working. So I think this is a very similar program. I really welcome the opportunity to reengage the Corps in a much more significant way with this council going forward. I noted in the mayor's budget a few items that made really good sense based on our past experience and capacity, one of those being parks, parks improvements, we did a lot of that work. Streets, sidewalks, you know, rehab of homes, senior painting homes, you know, things like that, really make a lot of sense. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those now, and again, appreciate very much your support of EOC and the Conservation Corps for many, many years now.
Sure. And I know that Kelly's going to meet with you and work out how to get you to compete for those projects and all that, but do my colleagues have any questions? Paul, Paul has all the answers usually.
The screen is clear, we have a motion and a second. If council members don't have further comment, then we can vote. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the item carries unanimously. Thank you. Move now to our 210 scheduled item, the hearing to consider environmental assessment.
Good evening, Council President, council members. My name is Jared Olson with the Development and Resource Management Department. Before you now for consideration is Plan Amendment Number A17003, Rezone Application Number R17005, Conditional Use Permit Number C17044, and the related environmental document. Staff's recommendations for this project have not changed, however, a presentation has been prepared. Additionally, myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this agenda item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Larry Johnson. I'm from... Thank you. My name is Larry Johnson, I'm from 1338 West Shields, Fresno, Fresno, California. If the council president for consideration, give me, allow, may I yield my main attention to Eric Payne to explain this item?
Are you going to, are you going to speak? You're going to use your three minutes?
Yes.
Well, then you can have three minutes, and then are you going to speak?
Yes, but I have a presentation, so I just wanted to be able to go through the presentation. Well, I was going to yield...
We, that's not, it's just, I'm just trying to figure out how you want to do it, because we do three minutes each person, we don't give time or donate time or anything like that.
Okay, that's fine. Then I'll just use my three minutes to speak to this item.
Okay.
Okay, Council President, thank you.
So, this is a rezone application, Eric Payne representing the West Fresno CDC. I would like to thank staff for taking the opportunity to speak with me on this item, and I'd like to go into the item, or into the agenda with the project overview. There will be millions in public investment, this is a public-private partnership, as well as an opportunity site, and a game changer for the neighborhood if done correctly. I've identified, I've outlined three problems, the development standard, the urban form, and the facade design. And in the three problems that I've, that I've outlined, I've also outlined three solutions. One, that you enable the development standard to this application, one that will enhance the character of the neighborhood and ensure that the scale and design of the new neighborhood development is compatible with the scale, mass, and character of the existing neighborhood with an industrial design. And secondly, the urban form should provide an enhanced streetscape, and while they do provide areas for neighborhoods serving uses, but what matters isn't just that we embark on this transformation, but how we carry it out and how it's done in a high-quality standard. And then finally, the development review process restrictions of the conditional use In my next slide, I've provided you with two visuals. To the right, you'll see the eight-acre site, and to the left, to the adjacent of the property, you'll see West Fresno Middle School, which has provided educational resources to this community. Housing that works. I provided you with some depictions of high-quality affordable senior housing. In the first slide, you'll see the cityscape from Lakewood, Colorado, interior and exterior design, and then bus stops that are compatible with active transit and multimodal transit forms. And then a green space that is acceptable to provide a high-quality living experience for those that are aging in place. And while I am sensitive that my three minutes is coming to an end, I'll skip to my Q and A, and that is simply, we have taken a neutral position on this application, but while we do have concerns, we would like for the council and the council member to address these, these issues. Will the applicant continue to process and partner with community stakeholders? And when will Phase II be completed, the 26 single-family units? As you are aware, this is a CUP application for a rezone. And then finally, will the city hold the applicant accountable in the design review process? And I'd like to thank the council for their time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none. Oh, there you are. Please give us your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Betsy McGovern-Garcia, I'm the Director of Real Estate Development for Self-Help Enterprises. Our address is 8445 West Alloin Court in Visalia. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you this afternoon. I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Mike Sanchez and his staff, McKenzie and Jared. They did a tremendous job with answering our questions, facilitating the project, and working with us on these entitlements. We've also received tremendous support from Councilmember Baines's office and the housing successor to the former redevelopment agency. We're pleased to stand before you today with this project. We think it's a great contribution to the existing community. We're planning on partnering with the neighboring Clinica Sierra Vista Health Clinic on delivering an expanded suite of services to the residents who will be living in the project. I'd like to thank Mr. Payne for his presentation. I think he hit on a lot of the goals that we're intending to achieve with the project. And just to answer some of his questions, yes, we are available and willing to continue the dialogue with the surrounding community and with the community members. We designed the initial preliminary elevations to achieve a look similar to the bridges at Florence Senior Housing Project, which was really well-received, I understand, by the city, but we're available to help further evolve those elevations and really meet the look and feel that is intended for the project. The green space elevation sample that was shown is something that we plan on incorporating. We'll have outdoor seating in front of the community building for seniors that are being picked up. We'll have community space for outside recreation, gazebo seating, things of that nature. In regards to the timing of the single-family, we are planning on moving through in the next six months the vesting tentative map process and the final mapping, and hope to have that wrapped up by the end of the year and under construction in early 2018. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? Please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll also have three minutes.
Sir, thank you. Mr. President and Ms. Vice President, council members, my name is Ruben Chavez, I'm with Clinica Sierra Vista, we're at 1945 North Fein Avenue in Fresno. And again, I just want to give our 100% support of this program. We are contemplating adding additional services for the elderly at that location, and we believe it's a, it's an amazing project, and it's only going to enhance the, and improve the neighborhood in the area, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, return it to the council deus. Member Baines?
Thank you, Council President. And first of all, let me just start by, there's definitely a person that we need to thank, and that's Marlene Murphy, she's sitting in the back, back there. You know, I, I would be remiss if I didn't comment on just the diligent effort of you and your staff, Marlene, and I know you're short-staffed, but you all, along with our planning department, really drove this, drove this process from the inside. So, thank you very much for being diligent, being diligent on this, and also want to thank Self-Help for coming into this project, listening to the concerns of, you know, me, first of all, and then, and then our community, and really meeting those concerns head-on. And I know you work very closely with my chief of staff, Raymond Eddy, and I thank him too, because I think this may have been his first development project that he put together kind of from, from the ground up. And I really appreciate the partnership with Clinica Sierra Vista. They are a fantastic community organization. I am, you know, very fortunate to have them in my district. It was always my hope from the beginning of this, when we talked about adding senior housing, that Clinica would respond precisely like they have, and it did not even take any arm twisting, because of the way Clinica is, you know, Clinica is just a great community partner, and when they heard that they were going to have senior housing close to, close to their site, they jumped at the opportunity to add some services specific to seniors. So, you know, I just got to say thank you to all those partners that came to the table and really put together what I'm confident will be, will be a good project. I know it's not done, I know there are a few things that we're going to do. I've personally looked at some of the, your other projects in other areas of Fresno County and outside, and, you know, I've been assured that you're going to build the same, same type of product that you build other places, and if, as long as that's the case, I know that my community will be very happy. Glad that Eric came and offered some feedback, and I'm sure that the Southwest CDC will, will continue to work, work with you, work with you all as well. So, with that, Council President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this project.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. We move on to the 215 item. This is a report to Fresno Revitalization Corporation and the Successor Agency. And for that...
Well, I guess I'll take, I'll take over this part of the meeting. We really only have one action that we're doing today, and it's time to elect new officers. So I'm the chair of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, and have been so since right before the wind down, I think the year before the wind down, I was the chair of, or when the RDAs were dissolved, I was the chair, and I had to see that process and have been the chair ever since. And with that being in mind, my time is now up. I've been the, been the chair of this, of this, the RDA and the successor agency for several years now. I know that there's new leadership that is, we have an opportunity to transfer leadership, and Doug, you're looking at me, do you have to say something?
Yes, we're actually electing the officers for FRC.
FRC?
Yes.
I thought we were doing, so I gave my long speech for nothing? Thanks, Esmeralda. And it won't be the last, you're right.
They may or may not match the officers.
Are we doing both or just one?
No. Just FRC.
FRC.
Then what do we need to do?
The Fresno Revitalization Corporation bylaws provide for a regular meeting each June, and at that regular meeting, you elect your officers, the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary and treasurer. And FRC, and the successor agency chair has been elected in January. So, what FRC has generally done is it meets in joint session with the successor agency, and so in furtherance of that continuity and consistency with past practice, the FRC office holders are generally the same as those of the successor agency. To simplify the process further after today, I think I would like to, if with your acceptance, change the bylaws so that this coming January, the FRC and successor agency chair are elected at the same time. This was, again, now they're at six-month intervals.
Will I make a motion that we, that Esmeralda Soria be the chair of the, is that the right thing? I can make a motion for Councilmember Soria to be the chair of the FRC?
I may get that.
All right, I'll make that motion then. It's been motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to elect the vice chair as well?
Need a chair, vice chair, secretary, and treasurer.
That's, that's almost all of us.
Then, Councilmember Soria is now the chair, so I'll let you handle the rest of the election process.
Thank, thank you.
Can someone do more than one thing? Because we can, you could be secretary and treasurer too.
I believe we actually have some other council members that are interested in taking leadership, so I would nominate my colleague, Councilmember Capriolio, for vice.
Chair.
Vice chair. So, seeing, is there any opposition? Seems unanimously. We have a new vice chair, and then what other position?
The city clerk has served as the secretary before, so it would make sense to nominate her as the secretary, unless you chose somebody else.
Member Chavez looks very interested.
Would nominate Yvonne for secretary.
Second.
Is there any opposition to the motion? Great, so we have Yvonne as our secretary.
Assume it's done, it's on.
Do we need?
Yes, and the treasurer currently, Deborah Barletta, with the successor agency, serves as the treasurer.
Sergeant in arms?
That would be the police chief.
So we'll nominate Debbie.
Yes.
For treasurer.
Second.
Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, Debbie is, will continue to be the treasurer.
And then, that's all of the business.
Great, so no more, no more business, we'll adjourn, thank you.
That meeting was entirely too brief. All right. We move now to scheduled communication. This time, it's an appearance by Mari Esther Correa to dispute the fines she has incurred by code enforcement on her Iowa Street property. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Mari Esther Correa, I really don't appreciate that everybody leaving, most of you, but it's okay, every, the company, community knows. Mari Esther Correa, 3407 East Iowa, Fresno, California, born and raised here in California. I want to dismiss, I want you all to consider dismissing the $13,000 that the code enforcement is finding me. I followed all the protocols, and I'm going to get an attorney if this is not done. I'm suing you guys, then I'll get my, I'll have my money back. I want to pay, I recommend that the city, city code people not, they put them on salary and not be on commission, because you're thieving, they're greedy, and they're, and they're scamming. I already talked to Dell about that, that they ought to fire the, the code enforcement that's thieving and scamming me, that he should be fired or be retrained, along with the others, like him. Gracias to Mr. Leong and supervisor for the permit department, Israel, I mean Ezekiel, the finest, I've known him for a long time, for over seven or eight years. He's coming, 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 he's the person that comes to inspector. He tromped all over my roof, but that's okay. They were courteous, they were professional, and they got the, they got the work done fast, and that's what I wanted. As to this minute, a second time, the, the code enforcement passed one of my units, and this is the second time, for the, both of them passed, and I'm a slum landlord, because my representative that I work closely with in Hawaii wrote me a, a letter, sent it to me priority mail, so could get here to... I could hear, I'm sure you all got a copy of it, to let you know that I'm a very credible and very much, and I'm out of breath, this smoke is killing me. But I work on their campaign, so Mayor, the Governor, my representative, and my Senator, and I'm sure that if I asked them sooner to give me a letter of recommendation for my credibility, then they would have got it. They would have sent it to me. So, thanks to Mr. Bogmudermut, wonderful person. And you seem to be tagging the homes for the Hispanic, the Hispanic communities, and this is wrong. And I want to attest that, I can't remember, Jose, my real estate agent who's already bought by a house, I'm not going to sell it. This is my home, and I'm not going to be forced out, like you've done other people in the Hispanic community with the revitalization. People are slamming, slumming, scamming, and that's not right. And anyway, well, this is, I've already passed everything, everything's done, and ahead of time, and more than I needed, because this is my home and I take care of it. One more minute, Clint Olivier.
No, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Well, this is very one important thing. My best friend, Fresno State Professor, he was in charge of the economic program at Fresno State, Elizario Losada. I want everybody to know that my BFF passed this morning, and I want them to know. And he's a very great man. He was a very great professor, my BFF, and he's also a priest. Thank you very much. I'm a happy camper right now, because we got things done, and we move forward.
Thank you. Moving to Item 3A, General Administration, Actions Pertaining to Contract Change Orders and Amendments for Various City Contracts, Public Works.
Counsel, I will note for the record that these two items are subject to veto.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Good afternoon, Council President, Members of the Council. My name is Randall Morrison, Deputy City Engineer with the Public Works Department.
Can you hold on just one second?
Sure. Again, my name is Randall Morrison, Deputy City Engineer with the Public Works Department. The item you have before you is for two resolutions regarding changes to various city contracts. The first resolution establishes procedures for contract change orders on standard public works of improvement contracts and requirements contracts. The proposed resolution reconciles the previous four resolutions that currently lay out the procedures. In addition, the resolution updates the thresholds for requirements contracts to be consistent with the standard public works of improvement contracts. The second resolution establishes procedures for certain amendments to product contracts, which differentiates the procedures for product contracts from public works of improvement contracts. The closing staff recommends council adopt both resolutions pertaining to certain contract change orders and certain amendments to product contracts. Thank you, and staff will be available if you have any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public in attendance right now who wish to address the council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and return to the City Council. Member Brandow?
Unfortunately, I missed the previous commentary, and then I missed a small slice of this. So, I do have a couple of questions, and this is 3A, right? We're on 3A? Okay. So, inside of this, it gives our department heads the opportunity to extend or enter into contracts up to $50,000, similar to the administration. Is that correct?
Are you referring to the products resolution? There's two resolutions. The resolution for certain amendments to product contracts?
Yeah, I guess so. Let me look at my notes. I don't know which, because it's not spelled out in the, it's not spelled out.
Counsel, it allows for adding to an existing contract up to $50,000 for certain contracts, not creating a new contract up to $50,000.
Okay, so only adding to current contracts up to $50,000. And so, I'm just going to express to my colleagues that I feel like that's part of our council oversight power when you have a contract up to $50,000. I think that council needs to hear about it. And so, I'm going to be not supporting that particular slice of this resolution. So, I don't know how to do that. How would I, would I make a motion to accept with the?
You could make a motion to not approve the item? Is that what you're asking?
I want to make a, I don't mind the other parts, but I want to remove that.
You'd make a motion to approve it without that provision?
Yeah, that's exactly what I want to do.
I'll second.
Counsel, I just wanted to clarify, this item, at least regarding the $50,000 on change orders, this does not increase the Director's authority on those. What we have before you is, we have the council adopted, the council previously adopted the Construction Management Act, which dealt with large projects over $10 million. And what this does is it really reconciles, it brings that together, along with previous resolutions that were adopted back in the 1990s, and it brings that all together in a housekeeping act. If the council chose not to approve that today, then the existing council resolutions would be in effect, which, for example, on construction contracts, say we're doing an AC overlay project, or maybe we're doing a DPU, has, say, a water main project in a neighborhood. The Director currently has authority up to $50,000 on change orders. City Manager has $100,000, and larger items than that come back to the council. This does not increase that threshold. It's really just a housekeeping act to bring that together.
Currently, Scott, when there is a, an addition of $50,000, does council hear about it?
When we award, when council awards construction contracts, they go out, they have contingencies in there. And for example, say we're, the next item that'll be before you on the Bullard Avenue contract, let's say we go out there, we grind off the top layer, and we find some deteriorated base layer underneath. That's something that's not apparent until you go out and expose it, and that will need to be dealt with really almost on the spot to avoid a delay in construction. And so, that's normal. We go out, council has asked us to have 10% contingencies on the jobs. We love it when we either don't use that, or often we even have savings. But if something comes up, that, say, a million-dollar overlay contract, that $50,000 is extremely helpful to keep the job moving and avoid delay claims.
Okay, so let me, so it has to do with executing capital projects mostly?
It does, and staff does not have the authority to exceed the budget that councils approve for a project. So, when we execute those change orders, they're consistent with the jobs, the projects the council's approved, and we live within the budget council's established for that project.
But it's really not about consulting contracts, then?
This is not about consultant contracts. This is about, the first resolution before you is concerning construction contracts and issues that come up during, in the field. And then the second item concerns equipment and product purchases.
All right, I'll listen to my colleagues. I might withdraw that motion. I was under the impression, I thought maybe it would also include consultant contracts.
Counsel, to clarify, there are existing rules concerning basically construction contracts, public works of improvements. This would add authority for other types of contracts that would also include contracts for material supplies, equipment, and services.
All right, I'm going to listen to my colleagues, if anybody's got any comments. Originally, you know, I just thought that, you know, $50,000 at a jump was worth council hearing about, but if we've already been doing it, and if it's strictly only capital projects, I'm open to that. But I'd like to hear from my colleagues if they have any thoughts.
Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I'm just, I guess I'm trying to figure out, so if we do, Scott maybe, or Bruce, if we have a change order, and you guys are allowed up to that $100,000 or $50,000, $50,000, I guess now, limit, once you've exhausted your contingency, because we're not keeping track of that, right? Like, because you guys can now make those change orders without coming to council, would that, would we at all be able to see if you guys get to a point where you guys are getting to that, the size of the original contract that we approved? Because you guys may want to come back for additional money? I'm just trying to kind of figure out.
Correct. And Counsel, within the resolution, twofold. One is, that does not provide actually any spending authority, so it's only what's within the council-established budget for each project. But in regards to, say, multiple change orders, what's in the resolution, and this stays the same as it has been, is that if cumulatively, or in aggregate, they get to a point, either that could bring it before the council, an extension of contract time, if it's taking longer, we need to add days. And throughout the calendar year, the council does see staff bring forward change orders for approval. But when they're very minor, you know, low cost, within the contingency, available budget, and they're small, then they're handled routinely, you know, each week.
So, what would be the threshold for the cumulative? Is it still 50, or?
So, one of the things I think we're trying to do is that currently, I have authority up to 10% of the total project costs. Under the Construction Management Act, which we help craft, we put a limit on that to be no more than $1 million. So, for example, if I have a $200 million surface wire treatment plant right now, we would have the authority to approve contract change orders up to $20 million. What this does is reconcile the Construction Management Act, is that when we start hedging into that area where we're going to exceed that authority, one, we have to make the Construction Management Group, whatever they are, aware, committee.
The oversight?
Yeah, and then we also bring, make those recommendations, we bring those to you as well. So, that's just one of the changes that we're trying to reconcile, the Construction Management Act to the existing resolutions.
So, but cumulatively, so it's, okay, so once we get up to 10% of that with change orders, then that's when you have to come back to council? Okay, okay, thank you.
So, what were your thoughts then? Okay, I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and second that as well. All right, so the screen is clear, we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to the motion? Item carries unanimously. All right, let's, we do have a special meeting, and that's what Chief Donnis is doing here. The special meeting was scheduled for 2:30, so let's go ahead and move on that item right Everyone has associated materials for that item. Chief, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members. In front of you is an item that we're looking for your approval. State OES is going to provide training to 17 of our firefighters for the entire series of hazardous materials training, which is a significant cost. This is a good time for us, because it's, we have many of our hazardous materials folks that are rolling off and ready to step out of that role as hazardous materials specialists, and we need to train up new folks. They are providing this training, we are bringing the training to Fresno. It's approximately six to seven weeks. They will fund the entire training, they will also fund the shift replacement to cover that training. And then we will receive a hazardous material OES apparatus that we will store here in Fresno, maintain through state funds, and then when it's called out on OES assignments, we will staff that apparatus, and then they will backfill and pay for those costs to backfill. We're looking for your approval of this contract, and, agenda item.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Well, yeah, but you have a motion by Member Soria. All right, and a second by Member Baines. We'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion? Carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. And now, we move to General Administration, Item 3B, Actions Pertaining to the Bullard Avenue Overlay, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members, City Manager Robert Anderson from Public Works Department. What we have before you today is an award of a overlay project on Bullard Avenue, basically between Blackstone and Marks Avenue in northwest Fresno. This project will overlay the street, slurry seal it in certain areas, and there will also be some concrete work for replacement of ADA ramps that aren't necessarily compliant in today, as of today. Previously, on October 11th in 2016, council approved an agreement with the County of Fresno for the county to participate financially in this project. Staff completed the project work and put it out to bid, and bids were opened on May 16th of this year. Emmett's excavation of Fresno was determined to be the lowest responsive bidder. So, staff is requesting that council adopt a finding of categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of the SECO guidelines, and award a contract to Emmett's excavation in the amount of $1,755,995 for the overlay project on Bullard Avenue between Blackstone and Marks, and also, you're requesting that council allow the public works director, his to sign on behalf of the city. That ends my presentation, and I'm available for answering any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go out to the public. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close this agenda item and bring it back to council. A couple of council members are punched up, starting with Member Brandow, and then Member Capriolio.
Motion to approve.
Oh, we have a motion to approve, and a second from Member Baines. Member Capriolio?
Thank you. What are the chances of getting that overlay extended from Blackstone Avenue, say, to Is there a way to continue that that would be more effective and less time-consuming than probably the normal channels as they are?
Afternoon, Council Scott Mosier, Public Works. One thing to note is that about four years ago, we repaved from the 41 freeway to First Street. So, that's good news, and that was done with federal grant dollars. So, we are missing now, and there is a need, between First Street, and really even beyond Chestnut, actually all the way to Willow Avenue, is in poor condition. It's not possible with this grant funding to add that on, but certainly, we talked during budget about public works coming back with a five-year paving and projects plan. So, that's definitely one we'd take into consideration.
Thank you. Please take it into deep consideration. Thank you, that's all I have.
I just want to follow up, I know Member Capriolio is going, and if I may, Council Member, I'm happy to support this item in its current form today, but for your specific request, I think, Scott, quick question, has that area that Councilmember Capriolio is talking about been studied at all? Is it a project, is it listed as a project yet?
We do have a citywide pavement management system with pavement, rating conditions, recommended treatments, and yes, it has, along with other streets throughout the city.
Councilmember Capriolio, if I might, I would suggest that when we return for budget hearings, since that area has already been described, called out as a project, that you try to get that included in the CIP.
All right, thank you for that advice. I'll do that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would second Councilmember Capriolio, we share Bullard, and it'd be great if we could extend it further. I know you can't because of the money, but I certainly want you to be aware that we do have a lot of streets that need that work as well, and we share that boundary, and clearly can use that help there.
All right, the screen is clear. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, it passes unanimously, and I think we have closed session. Let's go ahead and do unscheduled communication. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the City Council on any item that is not contained in the agenda? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Woody Hastings, I work with an organization called the Center for Climate Protection. My address is actually 7760 Dos Palos Lane in Sebastopol, California, so I work, I live in, not in the city of Fresno, but I work statewide on issues, energy issues, that I think are very relevant to the city, specifically community choice energy. I think that most, if not all, of you have received some communication from our correspondents that we've had here in the Central Valley last year about community choice energy. I'm here, I was in town for the Sustainable, Statewide Energy Efficiency Forum last three days, and Councilmember Baines spoke there. Keynote yesterday morning, thank you for that. Just, you know, just came from there, and just wanted to urge the City Council to consider reevaluating community choice energy. I know that the city of Fresno was involved in a conversation about that 10 or so years ago, San Joaquin Valley Power Authority. Some lessons learned from that, and there's a lot that's transpired over the last 10 years, eight community choice agencies operational now, and eight more on deck in the state, and they are reaping several benefits from those programs in collaboration with the utility on clean energy and lower rates and other community benefits. So just something that I urge you to consider, you know, agendizing at some point, making a formal evaluation perhaps. I know you've got a lot of other priorities, but that would be my suggestion. And we, the Center for Climate Protection, have lots of folks in other cities and towns that have experience with community choice, and we'd be happy to put you in touch with some of your peers if you so wish. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Council on any item not contained on today's agenda? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close unscheduled communication. City Attorney?
Yes, in closed session, we have Familius Adams versus the city. Also, real property negotiation concerning 1800 Tulare Street, labor negotiation concerning FPOA Basic, and evaluation and labor negotiation concerning the City Clerk. I would not expect any announcement afterwards.
All right, thank you. Counsel adjourned to closed session room.